Okay, I think we're six o'clock back there. So we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge and then a prayer with Commissioner Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for this wonderful day we've had. We ask that you be with our world today as we know we're going through turmoil and strife. We ask to be with this commission as we make decisions on our community. Help us make the right ones. God lead and direct us in all we say and do, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone out tonight. Man, this is a big crowd. We're not used to this. Usually it's George and Mike, so we appreciate it. First item of business, approval of minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and second any further discussion. Those in favor, sing about that.
Ah.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Make a motion, we accept the bills.
Second?
We have a motion and second any further discussion.
There is discussion on the one. I gave everybody a copy of it.
On the quantity, is that the number of hours?
Yes.
This is on the air backup sanitation program. Had the high pressure pump and the injectors.
It's rather hard to make a comparison because these are so vague where this is in detail.
We have additional quotes too. If you'd like to see those that are a little more, you know, whenever he obtained that quote, he specified everything that we were wanting to do.
How did they come up? How did these other places come up with these? How did these two places come up with theirs?
I'm assuming when a mechanic does a job, the local mechanics here, I don't know whether large equipment, they go buy children for so many hours a day for changing an alternator or whatever. And Chad has been trying to work with us. I just felt like the price was out in that field a little too far. And his first initial thought was he can knock a thousand dollars off a bill. And I told him I still couldn't approve that, that would have to come from city emission vehicles. And the figure that I had shot back at Chad was $4,087.73. And where I had come up with that was the two quotes that Chad had sent me or Sarah had sent me. I took that into consideration with the two quotes that I had received and divided them into four and got that figure. Then I had Chad work back on to where he had obtained the final testing and the $170 fee as well for the parts and the ready to hose the fuel.
As far as the quotes about going by book, the dealers going by book and stuff, there's no such book in the heavy equipment world, just so you know for better things. There's no such book. Each dealer makes their own quotes. What they do, and the only reason I know it's worked for three different dealers, you watch the quote videos and you start with everyone. What they do is they send you the set on the floor and just like changing the pump for the injectors. This engine's set on the floor. They've got all their tools set on the cart behind them and they time this guy. It's a new engine, by the way, clean, set in the floor in my end piece equipment. And they start, they time this guy to start and say if he's changing the pump, then they'll time him and how long it takes to change that pump so it to go by. Because, and the reason for that is, I guess it's kind of crooked on their part, but the dealers, when you bring something in for warranty, the dealers pay for that and then they submit that warranty to the manufacturer. And the manufacturer pays that dealer for that warranty. Well, if they can say that it takes 10 hours to change a pump and it takes 15, the manufacturer just got away with five hours free labor. Does that make sense? Was that clear on the editor?
In the book that he's referring to, they do use automotive. That's how automotive does it. The heavy equipment bills on the actual hours that it takes, not, you know, so if you take your car in to be worked on and it takes them five hours, but the automotive mechanic's book says 10 hours, they charge you for 10 hours. Whereas we charge you for actual time. And that's just the difference in the industry.
I wouldn't mind seeing what you have there.
Well, what I was gonna ask was, who were your two quotes to buy? If you don't mind me asking.
Two's from a cap dealer.
From, okay. I just want to know who they were buying.
You can see, they're sort of in the back. Last year were in the back. And then he actually had one come back today from, who's this guy? Chad. That's one that came up today.
Thank you.
Those cap dealers, one's out of Tennessee, one's out of Indiana.
I was gonna ask where they're from.
The reason for that is, once a dealer wants Boyd Cap or McAllister or somewhere like that makes a quote to somebody for a specific vehicle, they won't quote it to nobody else. That's the only reason there's not another quote from Boyd Cap.
Is Boyd, didn't Wayne?
Boyd is Wayne.
Okay. I didn't know they weren't Wayne anymore.
Well, I still call him Wayne.
I'm a little behind the times.
I still call him.
How long they been Boyd?
I don't know, because that was Walker for a while, Walker or Wheeler or something.
Missed that one altogether.
I remember being Walker. Larry, on that paragraph 1422, it says, they were told it could be possible $5,000 or more. Was that something we were told?
Or that?
On the first page of Mr. Coates's statement, it says 1422, on January 4th, says, we were told that if we cost like $5,000 or more, is that something we were told?
No. You know, the only work that I had expected to be done was changing the injector, first of the Huey pump.
He's already paid you before and that the part was gonna be $5,000 or more. Because if you purchase the part outright, because that's our policy, because, you know, we're not here to get rich, we're here to do a fair job.
They were saving the vessel. Yeah, they were saving the vessel.
Right, so it's our policy, anything that's over $2,000, parts are over $2,000, we offer any, any customer the opportunity to purchase it directly so that they don't have to pay our markup. So that saved you all about a thousand bucks by allowing you to purchase it directly.
My markup, by the way, on parts is 15%. I mean, that's very cheap compared to what it is.
So what was the, so the part was, y'all wound up paying what, $5,000 or $6,000 for it?
And that's what this is for, what was quoted, that the part would be.
Yeah, not later, it's just.
So really, that paragraph doesn't pertain to.
Okay, that's okay. Now I got you.
Well, the point of that paragraph is that we make sure, real good ensure, that that's what the problem is before we have you buy some over $5,000. You know, we don't want to put that in it and that's still not fixing.
I mean, if it don't fix it, then I, you know, if I put a board on, don't fix it, then that's my fault and I eat that deal.
I guess what really got us was, you know, going in, we kind of had a rough idea of what it was gonna cost. And Chad had worked on other equipment for us in the past and if there's something comes up, he'll call and say it needs this, this, and this. And he called and he told us the Huey pump needs to be replaced. Then he called back and says he got two bad injectors. He said, do you want to replace them? I said, no, but I want to replace two, I want to replace all six. So the communication line was there. If we get the bill in for other work done, it was kind of, I just thought this was a bill that needed to come to a conclusion.
The only other work that was done was the adjusting the valves. The rest of it is stuff that you have to do. You know, whenever you've got a part that is faulty and causes metal to get in the lines, you have to clean that out. Whenever you have contamination, you have to clean that out.
This one from Thompson's, it lists a fuel tank cleaning, cleaning fuel lines and being, did you do that too?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I didn't see that on the.
The one from Boyd and Caterpillar and Bollard Green does not. You know, this was kind of what we was kind of expecting, was something along that lines there.
I mean, was that necessary to clean them? That's why I was asking.
Yes, sir, that's what was talking about contamination being in there. Those trucks are kind of odd. The high pressure pump, what flows to the injectors on that is not fuel, it's oil. And that's what fires those injectors. Well, when a high pressure pump goes bad, it makes metal in that system. So then you got metal in your engine oil. So that's why you got to clean the oil lines and all that. Your fuel goes through a little transfer pump. And when the case of this one, the new transfer pump they sent had a crack in it, which we, so we had to replace that, which was no charge to the city, of course. It wasn't their fault, wasn't my fault either, but that's just part of the mechanic. You gotta eat some of it. And so we had to look at the old pump too. And the old pump, we actually pulled it apart, tore it down, the old transfer pump, not the one that come from fault to start with, but the old one that was on the truck, it was making metal as well. So we pulled the fuel filter off, cut it open, pulled it apart, and had metal particles, metal, metal particles in the fuel filters. So it was, we need to clean the fuel system out as well. If it didn't have, we could've got away just cleaning oil lines and changing oil and stuff like that, but because we found metal in the fuel filters, then we also had to clean the fuel system, you know. The last thing you want, obviously, is to send something out, say it's good, then it goes down, since you sent it out. Especially if that kind of running parts.
But there was one item, the adjusting the valves, that did not, did not strictly have to be done. That's something, it is standard procedure because the, however you get to it, it's hard to get to. So whenever you've got that V saw, you know, you check them and adjust them while you're there. But that was not, was not strictly necessary. That's all I'm saying.
Under the valve cover, of course the valves are under the valve cover. So anytime I have the valve cover off, I run a failure gauge under them and check them. This truck, especially because it's so hard to get to the valve cover and get it, half the engine sits in the cap and half outside the cap. So I checked them, they was outside, I went on and adjusted them. And that's my fault, I should've called Larry and I told Larry that on the phone, as, you know, it's all on me, I should've called him, asked him, but I'm more than willing to eat the cost of whatever that is, you know.
That was $255 to adjust the valves?
Yes.
The question is, is the commission approval thick? It's over your amount that you can approve?
Well, it's, when it's lined up on the bills, I didn't feel comfortable. That's why I called Chad. And, you know, and if Chad would've called me and said, hey, the valve need to be adjusted where it's pointing, I would've told him to go ahead because he was there. But it's just the total, the total kind of hours would've kind of had me bad. Like I say, Chad had said before, and I don't want to, if it's still on the table tonight, he would knock a thousand dollars off the bill. That's totally correct.
Well, that was in order to resolve the issue and just be done. Tonight, I'm listening separate with my kids, you know. And we don't, you know, we don't charge what these companies charge anyway. The cheapest that you're gonna get is $110 an hour if you go to any of these other places. And the quotes that he has are apples to apples, so.
I just find this one really hard because it's not in detail. Does it say in there how much they charge per hour?
Pretty chatty about the Thompson one.
Thompson, yeah.
I thought it was only at one point somewhere, or maybe not.
They don't have the hourly rate. We just got that one today.
It looks like the Thompson one does, yeah.
It doesn't show an hourly rate, it just has the.
I understand your hourly rate.
We just need to pay it more diligent next time.
Well, again, you're not comparing apples to apples, you're comparing one line item. Because that's how these companies set it up. They have, you know, they would give you an invoice just like this and it would have all of these additional things. The one that says.
What she's trying to say, if you look at the Boyd Cap quote, it says segment one, install injection pump. And the only reason I keep talking about Boyd Cats, I've lived there for almost four years and everybody in my family's worked here at some point. Matter of fact, the guy working on trucks had spent 19 years for Boyd Cat or Wayne. Anyway, it says segment one, install injection pump. Whenever they make quotes and they make work orders, they break each segment down. So like segment one would be install injection pump. Segment two would be remove and install injectors. Segment three would be clean the fuel system. So they obviously only quoted install injection pump. If they didn't, they would all be broken down into separate segments. And the reason they do that is number one for their, for their hourly warranty is what that boils back down to. So instead of having to do different for warranty, they just do the same thing across the board. The other thing is, if you send it all out in separate segments and the customer says, okay, well, I don't want the valves adjusted on it, well, that's easy enough just to take that one segment off versus reworking the whole work order. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
What about an estimate prior to the work?
There's no estimate, no full given.
I asked if he wanted to quote, but he specified, no he didn't, just fix the truck.
I said fix it.
I said fix it. Yeah, that's good.
Okay. I've looked at this briefly here and I will be just honestly, I think we need to pay the bill, just be more diligent in the future when we do this about having things clear before we start. So I will move that we pay Mr. Coates's bill and then make a stipulation, we be more diligent when asking for quotes and getting things down in the future.
I'll second that.
But it'll need, it needs to be for all bills because we haven't done any of them.
Yeah.
You're gonna make the motion to pay all bills?
I moved paying all bills.
Oh, we done that?
We already did that.
We got a motion and a second, all we need is to vote on it now.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, sitting in the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. I'm not showing any old or new on here, so.
How about that?
Sandy will start with you.
Gosh, Larry, do I have anything I need? I haven't been driving around the streets lately. It's usually when I drive around, I find stuff. I see new pictures.
George, if anything came up today.
Up around Jerry Mays's house. Was that you, Mike?
I did.
Okay. I did not make it up there when I was born.
Says it goes out a lot and stays out.
And I noticed there's been some ditch work done and I appreciate that.
Oh, glad you said that. We had, help me out, bedows. We started on the ditch there at the.
Bridge at 60, at 231?
Yeah.
By the round, storage place.
There about AP Stores.
Yeah.
We're going from AP Stores back to the, I think the first bridge, Walking Trail Bridge. And then hopefully next week, the city will start on the other side of 231 going down to Taylor Street and then we'll do South Lafayette as well.
And I have a feeling my dad and Eric will probably, they cleaned over in the neighbors across the street in our yard because it's on, it's not city, it's on private property. So I sent Larry a picture and I said, we got new two, two city employees.
Send them out.
So I have a feeling they'll probably do that because no doubt he likes to stay busy. And Eric likes to help him. So I have a feeling they'll probably, they'll probably do that some every now and then.
Now, South Lafayette, we're doing on the west side of?
Yes.
Because there's not a ditch on the east side, is it?
There's minor ditches on the other side of east.
Jimmy Beddoes, did we talk to him when they were on the ditch, when they started the project? He thinks a lot of the problem could be the trees that are in the bottom of the ditch that we left from the amphitheater property called Wenton Briscoe Road. He said that need to be cut out and pulled out. He thinks there's stopping a lot of flow.
I can't place Beddoes, what do they own?
Jimmy Beddo?
Do you know the Beddo?
I mean, I know all of them, but I don't know.
ER Trucking, they do the clean out, excavate and stuff.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you were saying they own property there.
Well, Suzie's mom and dad.
Okay, I know where they live, yeah.
You're talking about from the amphitheater towards Briscoe Road? And that's not ours, we can't.
Well, yeah. A portion of it, yes.
I didn't think we went to the.
The lower portion.
I didn't think we went to the ditch.
The lower portion we do, we cross the ditch, we become a bit of an angle.
That part we can clean out, but there's not much we can do about the other.
We wanted to go in and do it now and that's the way over the ground's soft, we're just gonna like sew down and level it up, so I thought we probably had July or August job.
Think I'm good?
Charles?
Oh, I have nothing new.
Kevin? And you know what I'm.
Pickleball. Okay. We, we've had several drafts of what we're gonna do down there. They are coming in mid-April to do the coloring, would that be the way to say that?
It's a coating.
The coating and the coloring for the park, for the, for the pickleball courts. And Mike and Jimmy Harris got together and come up with a plan on how they want the fencing done. We did, we got two bids so far in and they're both less than what we, what the last one was for sure. And this one for the, it's for the netting and, is it for the netting and the fencing or just the fencing?
That's just the fencing, the netting's coming from the guy at Lowe's.
Okay. So just the fencing and it was $21.5 from Josh Tichner.
Company he uses that.
Yeah, the company he uses. And since I'm in charge of that, I think we need to make that in a motion. I think we need to go ahead and, because we've got to get it in the ground before they come to do the sealing. And we need to get it in the ground, get the post concrete, get them in there, get them set, get them like they want it to, do any smoothing up we need to do before we.
How much is the sealing in?
I'm sorry?
How much is the sealing of the course?
They're doing that at a low volume.
Yeah, it's 11 maybe? Is it 11 or 8? It's one or the other, I don't know which one. It's been so long since I talked to Jesse.
Ceiling is the netting too, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the ceiling and the netting. I want to say flip.
Make that in a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make that a motion. We should go ahead and accept the Josh Tichner's bid. Because it was the cheapest.
Okay. You got a second?
Second.
We did get two though, at least?
Yes, we got them and Diggers over at Owensboro. Diggers wasn't bad either, but it wasn't.
Diggers was $24,000.
Yes, $24,000 or more.
Well, of course it's state law now, as long as it's under $30,000, we can do it without advertising, so.
We had two bids and both of them, the bid we had before when we added all the gates and stuff in, it was way over 30. And that's why we had to cut back and redo it.
So this will get us with this, the sealing and the netting, that will get?
It will get, this is just for the fence, the 21.
Yeah, the fence.
For the fence.
And I know the other was, I know that.
And the other's coming in under a different thing, but it's already, we've already been talking to Jesse Henderson and that's all been taken care of. He's gonna come middle of April and they're gonna do it all and he said they'll probably do it in two days.
But once those two things are done, the pickleball courts are ready to play on.
Except we want to put new lights up. That'd be the only thing. We got, we got lights, Larry, Larry's gonna get us new lights and we're gonna have new poles and concession stand and I don't know what all they want down there. But right now, yes, that's gonna get us playing pickleball.
Okay, that's what we need to do.
They gotta wait a couple weeks or week two after you apply. Let's say, I'm not sure on that really, but it's.
Now you want us to build it and close it? Okay.
Well, that's what it is, Mike, you get on too soon, you can fix it.
I would like it to cure a little bit too, but, you know, let's just get it all done.
I've worked so much too, just things have been going on.
Yeah, so, but it is, that's, that's to get it where y'all play on it.
Good deal, okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, sitting in the aisle? Post same. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Kevin?
I'm done. That, that one was enough to get off me for six, eight months right there.
Larry?
Relocate. All paperwork I think has been submitted as of today. Now, I think everything's in the state's hands, waiting to hear from them to give us approval to start building the building and pumping water.
How much we getting out of it at the rate?
It's rated at 55 gallons a minute to the state, just according to the raw down test. But I think we can still pump about 69 or 70 gallons a minute, which would make us 30% less dependent on the county.
Wow, that's good.
It's just a buffer.
It helps?
Good thing to have. Anything else?
I have a couple bills. I have a couple bills that went, sent out for a couple of jobs that was, that work was done and they have not paid. I don't know if we need to go in a closed session to discuss them or.
Probably because there could be litigation, so.
They haven't paid us or we haven't paid them?
They haven't paid us.
Okay.
AV, do you have anything? Georgia? Mike Allen?
We're good.
Okay.
They good?
Okay. No, hang on. Make sure we get everybody. Okay. And y'all are good? Okay, now we're, we'll come on to you. I thought we were ready for you, Shirley, Ms.
Well, they're coming up front.
That's okay.
Oh, come on up.
These are notes, first of all, I'm Shirley Lindsay. My sister Rita Lindsay, Southern. I've been here before. We're the daughters of Seaby and Ray Valenzy of 127 Taylor Street in South Beaverdam, where everybody knows. Dad passed away 25 years ago, but our mom will be 102 in May. She still lives in this area, okay? I wrote all this down because a lot of people made notes, a whole list of them, and asked me to represent them here, and that's what I'm doing. Where were, first of all, that that is a flood plain, okay? But mom and dad lived there over 45 years. Water never got into their house until the last three, four years since the amphitheater was built. And the field across the road from us that grows corn every year, nothing against the farmers, but they leave their corn stalks in there and for like three years in a row now, it has flooded that area. My mom is 100, almost 102. Rita lives with her to take care of her. They have lost everything, three different times. We have hauled truckloads of stuff away and had to replace it, even a floor this time. We would like very much, not just us, but there was how many people? About 30 different families who's lost everything, two, three times. When all it would take would be a little bit of consideration to get the corn stalks up because they drain, they drain, stop all the drains, all the tiles, they're stocked up, the water can't go through there. So we would like very much for the city to do something about it because it's, it could be prevented. Most of it could be prevented. And like I said, they lived there 45 years, longer than that actually, and never had water to get in that house until the last two or three years. Mom cannot be moved. We tried that once in one of the floods and we like to lost her as well as a bunch of other people. The water is contaminated and it's dangerous and it not only puts everybody's health in jeopardy, it puts their lives in jeopardy. And we would like very much for something to be done. I don't know what exactly, but some of them suggested having the farmer to till up the corn stalks, put a fence the length of the lot, the property, and keep their corn cobs over on their property if they're not gonna, you know. So anyway, I made my spiel.
Was the farmer contacted about the corn?
What can be done? I don't know, but we need help.
I understand, and I talked to two different farmers, not that farmer, but two different farmers this winter after one of the last ones, asking what, what can be done. The problem we have, and we're going to reach out to the farmer because we've already talked about it, they suggested the disking it up because they said that would, with tilling it, they do no till right now, so everything just lays on the ground and they go in and they don't disc like they used to.
They are tilling it now, I think, getting ready to. They are tilling it now, I think, getting ready to plant.
They're doing, I think they're, I think they're doing some tiling too. That's what it looks like, because I, I saw those are, those are down there now. Tree lines out and fence lines. But one thing would be to get them, to do that, I had thought about the fence now, the fence would hold it back and keep it from coming through if it's a woven wire.
They could clean up the corn cobs and stalks instead of all of us.
Point well taken.
It's terrible, and it stinks to have, and don't forget the trash. And the trash.
Sure. Oh, absolutely.
I live there. She's trying to help me in law. Okay, here's my story. I love it, I love the Beaver Down, and now, is that city or is that country? I got told that wasn't the city.
You're in, pay taxes, you're in the city.
Are we in the city?
You are.
Well, I thought I knew where I was at.
The farm, the one we had, where we're running into a problem is the farmer's not in the city.
Oh, well, see, I didn't get that.
Yeah.
But anyway, here's another thing, I'm, I don't think I'm better or nothing, or I'm not against the poor people, okay? But here's the problem, down the street, there's this house that's down in there, junky cars, there are trash, I don't drink. Beer cans thing come up, I have to go out there and pick it up. That's not fair.
Well, I can say a little bit about that, but I've got, I can't say a whole lot, because we're, there's some litigation coming up with that piece of property.
Because we clean.
Code enforcement has been on it, in fact, they had a meeting the other night, and it's going into litigation right now.
Well, the lady across the street, it was terrible, they, I didn't, I'm never, I'm not a drinker or a dope, they was in dope, I didn't even know it. And they finally moved, but the city did come down there, and that lady got that mess cleaned up, so.
But it's just, uh, it's terrible, see, I'm, just go down there and spend the day, and when that water comes through there and you're surrounded, and you've got a hundred and one-year-old mom sitting there terrified, and she never had to go through this before, it's, uh, I don't know, but I'm up to there with it, so.
Well, I actually lived on South Lafayette, so, I, I have lived on South Lafayette, I lived there for nine years.
And I grew up on that.
And he grew up on there. It's flooded down there before.
It's flooded, I said it's flooded.
But now, I agree, the last few times with the cornstalks, it did get.
That was the worst I've ever seen it.
That was bad, but I'm not real sure, the rain wasn't one of the worst I'd ever seen too.
No, that's true too, I agree.
Yeah, but I agree, it's always gonna hold water, and we've tried really to make the ditches as big as we can, and we're trying to get the water out of there, it's just almost impossible with that much water coming that fast, and I mean it in all honesty.
Now, that nine inches of rain was out of the ordinary, for sure.
That's, is that the first time y'all really had, I, I know you've had water as far as getting in your house?
No, it's been three, three times now.
Wasn't that the first one?
Few years, no, it wasn't the first. I had to, I lost stuff I had for years.
Because I know that was in June of twenty.
And we still got a whole floor out, we, we don't know whether to fix it, because I don't, I, I'm putting money out, okay? And I don't want to put money out in a money pit to live in to go fix over and over and over, I don't have a lot of money. I'm trying to do it right the best way I know how, that's my story. If I know y'all gonna help me, I'm gonna go all the way and fix it, try to.
Yeah, that's, and you said y'all couldn't hear what I was saying, I might go on there, we've started this week, was it this, last week?
Last week.
We started at two-thirty-one going towards Bruce School cleaning out that, that ditch.
I heard about them having it too.
And then they're gonna come up, well, but that's, all this water goes through there, and then we've got to come back up from two-thirty-one up Taylor Street to Lafayette, and then South Lafayette ditches clean out again.
It floods down there too, so that would be the best way to handle it, I would think.
What we really need to do, if there was a way to do it, without an act of Congress, would be to start at Muddy Creek and come all the way around. All the water that goes through here comes by McDonald's.
Well, another thing.
Eventually.
It goes to McDonald's.
And, of course, you understand, because you've, you've had to listen to Bill, I'm sure talk about some of this stuff over the years.
Well, yes.
Cleaning them out, and.
I know a little bit about it.
Yeah, and.
But also, we don't want any hard feelings with anybody here.
We understand.
Like I said, we both lived on South Lafayette, we've dealt with it before too.
But at the same time.
My best friend lived there, so I was there all the time.
Yeah, you know.
I remember in the seventies, the Smiths, who's the Beddoes in-laws, I remember they had terrible flooding then, did it get in your mom's house then?
No, no, it's, now, it gets us, don't get me wrong, it gets us.
Right.
I mean, it's never got in it, this time, the last three times, it's got in it. They have hauled off, dumped these big dumpsters you rent, how many, four?
Uh, five.
We had to load all that stuff up, take it through the dumping and pay the dumping. On a free day, they made me pay, everything, and another thing, the driveway over there, it's got a big hole in it, we gotta get that fixed. We cut down its trees, we've done everything and all for nothing, if y'all don't help us, I gotta go, I ain't got nowhere to go though. And mom don't mind, but we appreciate you.
Who's the gentleman that lives behind, on the corner there, because I was talking to him in June of twenty-twenty, when we had the water almost came in, but in the building right here, that nine inches of rain and something, it got in his house that time for the first time in thirty-six years.
That was the worst one.
That was, well, that's where we, that's where I first realized how bad the cornstalks were, was that one.
It got into there, I think, once before, that time, and then this last one.
And then, of course, we've had two since then that's done about the same thing.
Yeah, so, anyway, we, we'd like for y'all to consider.
We are looking at what our options are as far as dealing with the property owner and the farmer. What we can do and can't do, and.
Well, what's this about them being country and this being city and nothing can be done?
Well, they're not in the city limits.
I know they're not.
Well, you'd have to go through the county and physical court. The city ordinance doesn't apply as much to them, you'd have to go through the county and the physical court if you wanted anything acted out there.
Well, then we'll do that if we have to, but we've also, well.
There's some, there may be some other things.
Yeah, maybe some other things.
I'll ask Jason Bullock if he can give you a call.
Some real nice guy, I don't know who he is, named Larry, what, Carter?
That's that guy, oh, he's not real nice.
You said nice guy?
He's not real nice, y'all just lost all your credibility right there. You just blew it right there.
He's turning three shades of red, I've never seen him be that red.
He is really nice, yeah.
He was, this guy called me up and said, Victor, I'm trying to get you. I don't know, it's, I don't know you people, not well.
Well, you know me, you come to my yard sales, I usually have a deer rag going up my yard sales.
But there are, there may be some things we can do, even though it's in, not in the city, there's some things we've already started trying to address to see what we can do.
And it's not just my mom and my sister. I got a paper, can you get it? I got a bunch of signatures here, people, I got, no, really.
Well, I know, because I know, uh, Mr. and Ms. Smith, Smiths, I know them well, and we've talked about what can be done to alleviate.
Well, you know, if you can, we, we would appreciate it, because, like I said, mom's old. And we liked to kill her the last time trying to get her out. And it's terrified her, it terrified her, it terrified all of us, and not only us, the other people.
I think David was in on that, he probably was a little bit nervous about it too.
It was scary things.
You have to, you have to remember too, that every time it floods at her house, it's flooding the amphithe, or the park down there too.
I understand.
And we don't want it down there either.
I understand.
So, I mean, it's all, it's all.
The park was designed to flood, to help.
Cornstalks and everything else.
Well, yeah, but that's just to be cleaned up.
Those cornstalks, goodness sake, they're still, we're not picking them up this time, they can stay there and rot.
Yeah, you ought to see our mailbox.
It made us sick to get out there and clean that stuff up.
I ain't gonna do it, because I didn't do it.
I know anything y'all can do, we appreciate it.
If you mess, you clean it up. My daddy, when I went to school here in Beaver Down, when we went to school, we was taught, if you tore a people's property, you cleaned it up, that's the way we was raised. And that's all it is about, just trying to make it right. I would, them, if they'd been us and went on to their property and left a mess, every one of us would have went over and cleaned it, simple as that.
Things have changed. Things have changed over the years, haven't they?
I know, but I still got that same junk inside of me, that's why I'm so messed up. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank y'all for coming.
Thanks for coming.
It's good to meet you.
Like I said, you lost all your credibility right there, I'm sorry.
How much did you pay her for that lady?
He did get off a red though.
I've got, we've taped video and everything else.
It wasn't the best, especially that one time, it was.
April?
I'm small, so I'm not gonna sit back there.
You stood up and I still couldn't see you, so I'm glad you come around.
So I gotta come up here.
No offense, Chad, you're not that big, but she's just that small.
So, I am just a conservative, and I don't even have hair, I don't even have kids, um, the age of what I'm gonna talk about. My kids are in high school, so, but, when was the ball field built?
Two thousand and ten.
Okay, so my kids were there as soon as it was built. Um, so, I will share with you that it's been the ongoing issue since my kids were there. So we're looking at twenty or twelve years, okay, it's been going on this long. Um, I'm just passionate about it because it matters to me, okay? Um, the bathrooms and the farmer's market, it's, I, I get it, I get it, believe me, but.
I'm in charge of the park, so you know I'm.
I'm gonna tell you, there has to be a solution, there just has to be a solution.
How do you keep people from wiping feces on the wall and tearing the seats off?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, there's gotta be a solution, and if I gotta be a part of helping you find that solution, I will be a help, help, I will help you. I will help you, if you need a woman on your committee, of your cleaning committee, that you need to send over there that knows what they're doing, get a woman, okay? Because if men don't know how to clean a bathroom, then let's do something about it, there's gotta be solutions.
That's not the problem.
Okay, so we, there's gotta be solutions, we keep the doors locked, the park needs to only be for the ball field, we keep the doors locked, right now.
Porta-potties, that was my suggestion.
Right now, the door is broken.
That's because the door was locked, and they broke it to get in.
They broke it.
So, I don't know what it will take, whether they get consequences, whether there'll be cameras, whether the police monitor.
Put cameras up, we can't do that.
I don't know what it needs to take, but this is not okay. And in other parks and other places, obviously, they figuring it out because they don't have this issue.
Well, yeah, they do have this issue, even the county park, we talked about on a regular basis, he has the same problems, Owensboro has the same problems.
And I agree with you, I understand, I've been down there and gone in them and looked at them and went, oh my gosh.
We, we don't understand the mentality, why?
What I would tell you right now is, right now there are, every night, there is three practices a night, they just started last week, you don't know all this.
Yes.
Okay, three practices a night, twelve teams a night, that's a hundred and twenty kids, that's parents up there, I don't know, think back when you have kids. I'm a mom, I've got little babies, okay? I've got one on the field, I've got a baby right here, I might have three babies that are playing while one's out on the field. What am I supposed to do when right now, that bathroom is disgusting, utterly disgusting? No, 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 just wait.
Okay.
Okay, utterly disgusting, okay? What is a parent supposed to do? Hold up their kids, get in the car and go to the Dollar General down the street? Because it's not being maintained and it's not being taken care of?
What?
You have taxpayer dollars of families, that is four hundred kids, there's forty teams, that is four hundred kids at minimum, at most four hundred and eighty kids, that are on those ball teams. That's a lot of kids, and that's a lot of parents and a lot of siblings that are up there, okay? So all we're asking is facilities to be maintained and be cleaned and be hygienically prepared and accessible for parents to take their children in there and let them use the restroom and leave.
April, I'm gonna say, I take exception to the park that they're not maintained and cleaned. We maintain them and clean them, and before the ballgame starts, they're nasty.
No, you need to go.
We know, we see it every day. Well, I don't know, but I cannot put a guard in a bathroom twenty-four seven.
But there's got to be a solution.
We've locked them and they tear the locks off.
And they break the lock and they complain.
Literally, those toilets are black right now, the trash is spill everywhere, the trash cans are nasty. I don't care if you go and empty the trash, the trash can is still nasty, let's bleach them or let's put bags in them. There's got to be some type of solution, I don't care to be a part of it.
We've been trying for twelve years to come up with a solution, and.
And it doesn't work, so whatever we're trying ain't working.
And that's why I say, the only possible way we could fix it is porta-potties, shut the bathrooms completely.
Take them out.
Porta-potties out there.
That's sad, because you all have a nice facility.
And, and the people in this town ruin it, they tear it up and destroy.
So do they have, do they need consequences? I don't know.
But you can't catch them, well, you're not allowed to put, you're not allowed to put a camera on them, so.
What can be done, is there any type of consequence that could be done for vandalism?
If you catch them, but there again, you got to catch them in the act.
So how, why are cameras not allowed?
It's invading property, privacy.
It's your property.
Doesn't matter.
You can't put them in the bathroom.
Not in the bathroom, outside the bathroom, to catch who's coming in and who's breaking them off.
But you still can't prove they did it when they come out.
You had forty kids, you had forty teams.
I'm just saying, I can show you the pictures, okay, so can we get them cleaned by tomorrow? Because there's practices up there five days a week, five days a week, and right now they are black and nasty. My, my neighbor went up there last week with her kid for the first time.
But we didn't turn, has water turned on today?
Can't use the bathroom, can't use the bathroom.
They shouldn't even, that's why we had them locked last week, so they couldn't get in, because we did not, wait, no, wait, you asked us to wait for you, you wait for me a minute. They could not, we had them locked last week, because we could not turn the water on, because it froze over the weekend, we had busted pipes. We had the doors locked, and they destroy and tear the locks off the doors and go in and use the bathrooms anyway with no water in it.
Last year, last year I had three months, three months of bills down there, and it happened twice in a women's bathroom. They'll take the flapper, they'll chain off the flapper, wrap it around the flapper, I had three bills, eighteen hundred dollars a month for water and sewer.
And they'll tear the cameras up, and when, what few times we tried something like that, they'll tear the cameras up.
But if they come, if you see somebody come out of the bathroom on camera, you have no way of knowing for sure that person is the one who did it.
We want a solution.
We, we do.
And I get that, I mean, obviously, but there's, what's the missing link, like there's gotta be something, I don't know.
Adults learning how to act like adults and not destroy.
The first one we started was.
What we teach our children.
I know.
Farmer's market, they cleaned it up on a Friday afternoon, locked the doors, and then came and opened them on Saturday morning. By noon, I'd already got a phone call, I had to go down there and look, and the, they were disaster, and they cleaned spotless on Friday afternoon. And between the time they opened up at noon, they had already destroyed the bathroom.
So who is the?
So they've broken, what, a sink off of the wall?
They broke off multiple sinks off the wall.
Sinks off the wall.
Feces on the wall, feces on the floor, I mean, it's, it's the most.
I get it, I mean, I've seen it, and I've, I've been hearing this for ten years as well.
Exactly.
Just saying, right now, there are teams up there right now, like, they can't go to the bathroom, there's moms, if they were kids right now, they can't go to the bathroom.
We put porta-potties in at one place and they turned porta-potties over.
Let's hurry and get the porta-potties.
But they, they turned the porta-potties over, so see, we're in a no-win situation no matter what we do. It's the most horrifying thing I've had to deal with when it comes to parks.
We've tried to come up with a solution.
Look, I am as much.
There is nobody more passionate about the park than these people sitting right up here.
I am very passionate, that's one of the reasons I wanted this job in the first place, was to make sure that place got done right. And, and it's beautiful facility, we've gone out of our way to make it nice, and we do something nice, and then they go in there and trash it. And April, I'm, I'm just as important as feeling.
So do we have the police monitor and drive through the park, like, and make their presence, you know?
They do.
The thing that it is, is just like you said, we, cameras could be put outside. How many, how many people did you say lived in there, maybe?
Forty teams, she said, with ten, at least ten.
Forty teams, four hundred to four hundred and eighty kids, plus their parents, plus their siblings, plus their grandparents.
Yeah.
And, great, it's probably, probably not any of them, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's adults.
It's none of them.
But if you've got ten people that's lived in there.
Yeah, well, I think it's adults, we just never could catch them.
You're not, you're not going up, you're not going in there.
It's great, you can go out to ten people and interview them and.
Well, these people that obviously are doing this are not there at the time that the families are there.
Right.
So it's there when it's dark, it's there when it's vacant, it's there when it's empty, and they're going in there and they're doing this.
The only way that that could be, is somebody, somebody sits there all the time. And when one comes out, walk in and hit the door, that's all they.
Well, I mean, could, okay, so.
We can't do that.
Out of consequences, I mean, think as a parent, what you would do to your child as a consequence, like, if that happens for a month, and then they start figuring out, oh, they've got our game, they're, they're on our back, they're watching what we're doing, we can't go up there, there's somebody up there, like, Like, maybe you'll have to monitor it after that fact for so long and consistently, but you monitor it for a while to get on there, let them know you've got their picture, you're on there, you know, you're watching them, you're, you know, whatever, like...
Do you think the parents...
And then maybe they wouldn't be like, okay, let's go somewhere else and they'll take their trouble somewhere else.
They have neighborhood watch groups, do you think the parents would do a watch group where if your kid wasn't playing, you'd go watch the bathroom while the other game was going on?
I don't, while the games are going on?
No, no, not while your child's game's going on, while somebody else's child's game's going on.
So you wouldn't miss your...
So that we could have somebody in the bathroom at all times.
I would do that while the games are going on, but I don't know if that's when all the terrible issues start happening.
That's when a lot of the trashing happens.
Nighttime and after and...
A lot of it is, we've locked them at night and they still tear them up when they come in the next day.
But aren't they locked after the games?
Usually.
So if they're locked, then nobody can get in.
Well, they are now because they broke it, get in there.
To get in.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a certain way to lock the doors open, you know, if you had them open, is that invasion of privacy? But, because there's so much traffic there, if you had them open...
It takes a master key to open them, and they're the same keys as the high school.
No, I'm saying like, while it's going on, leave the doors open instead of closed.
Even if they're open, they'll still go in there and do it, they'll wait until everybody's out of the room and then they'll do it. That's the thing, how are you gonna know they were the ones that did it? That's the problem, mate. It's not so much that we can't, if we could catch them, I guarantee you, Mike would have some, have him back in a police car going hard.
These are like teenagers that are out at night, late at night, just jumping the fence and going in.
You would, wouldn't you, Mike, you put him in the back of the car?
I'll be honest with you, I don't believe, I don't believe it's teenagers, I believe it's adults.
Yeah.
I honestly think it's adults.
We just...
Just honoring.
And more than likely not late at night jumping the fence.
Ask some of your other parents if they would be willing to do like a neighborhood watch. I mean, I'm all for it, I would do anything, like you say, to make it better. Not to where they have to miss their kid's game, or not to where they have to stay an exorbitant amount of time, but say, y'all split it up, like you do, like you watch your kid play and then you stay for half the next game and watch the bathrooms, and then somebody come in early and, and watch the other half. So that we have somebody, like you say, that might stop it.
At nighttime, like, what happens at nighttime?
They're supposed to lock them when the games are over.
Right.
Again, when they lock them, we can't help they break in, there's nothing anybody can do about that. Because you, you know, they break in everything or anything.
We put extra toilet paper on the back of the toilets, that way, you know, they're not gonna be cussing stand, before the first game's over, it's out, I mean, they're...
People steal them.
Yeah, carry them home, carry them home.
Okay, yes, but like...
Still throw it in the toilet.
We had people going in there and taking baths, shampooing.
There's gotta be, in that whole middle process.
I wouldn't care if they did that, Kevin. I wouldn't care if they did that when they're in there and taking baths.
Workers have access to it.
Crap on the wall.
Yeah, it's the crap on the wall gets me.
Who, who, in their mind, reaches in there, gets it and then wipes it on the wall? What kind of idiot does that?
Y'all, because honestly, this looks bad on the people running the ball field. Because the parents going up there don't know that it's a city ball, so they think it's them, you know?
And to the time, it took somebody that had some...
The people who run it right now...
Had a lot of guts to do that.
To help and work together and figure out...
And had a thick stomach because I sure couldn't have done it.
Where are we gonna keep the toilet paper, how are we gonna maintain it? You know, let's care for what, what it looks like right now, whether we need to paint the walls, repaint the floors. As at the boys' bathroom, it smells horrendous. Um, and they bleached it, they went in there, they've bleached them, they've cleaned them, they still smell horrendous. So like, a fresh coat of the really heavy concrete ceiling paint, fresh paint, if the sinks keep getting broke off the walls, let's go for a different kinda sink. That's not one that's on a pedestal or mounted on the wall, let's get one that has a base and it's not gonna be broke off of the wall twenty-four seven.
Break them off the wall, it's a set model.
Sure, but like, get one that's like...
That all sounds very fine and good, but at what point do we stop pouring all kinds of money into something because they destroy it? We have a city to run here, we've got police, fire, we have a budgetary constraints that we have to deal with. And it gets old when you keep spending more money and more money and more money, and then you hear people tell you, well, the only thing the city's interested in is our concession stand. They have no idea how much fencing costs up there, they have no idea how much concession stand building costs, they have no idea what mowing costs, they have no idea what electric and water costs, they have no idea the fact that we drag the fields before every game, every day.
And you gotta clean the toilets and fix them and everything.
And then they come back and it's like, you're, we want you to guard the bathrooms.
But the first thing that they see...
If they would take care of it, we wouldn't have this problem.
Right. I mean, I don't, I knew that when I was there, that wasn't me, that wasn't, I never saw that one person mistreating it. But you knew that it was gross and people don't value something that already looks gross, they kinda mistreat it, that's just common sense. Like, you don't, when something looks nice, you tend to wanna take care of it, you wanna treat it nicer than it is. Leave it better than you found it, but when something's kind of yucky already...
I will tell you when it changed.
People naturally don't really take care of it.
Tracy and I were discussing this last night.
Painted, fixed up, new trash can.
When the ballpark was at the Beaver Dam Grade School, the city didn't take care of the facilities. The league took care of the facilities, they took care of concessions, they took care of cleaning and everything, and we kept that place clean. When it changed is when it moved down here and the city took it over and the parents decided, doesn't matter, city will clean it up.
Well, they might be willing to do something.
That's, that's why I...
And I don't mean all the parents, but the group of parents, that's when it changed.
And not acting defensive every time someone comes to it, and I get it, it's an ongoing issue.
We'll clean it every time, but we wanna make sure it stays that way.
Since it opened, it's been an issue at the farmer's market since it opened.
And we've tried different things.
You know, they just see an issue, I get it, but...
Well, we could, we could shut it all down and not have a park and not have a farmer's market, but I don't want that, at all.
But the attitude of defense is probably where nobody's really...
The attitude of defense is because people keep coming like this.
Y'all are tired of talking about it, everybody else is tired of talking about it. So, what do we do? We clean the slate, we figure out, how do you move forward from this point? How do you make it look good and maybe make it respectable, nice, clean, and not just halfway, whatever?
It is clean when they start on it, like I said, I have gone down there because we spent weeks, and I went down there and, and they, the guys came in, they, they mopped it, they wiped the walls down. It was immaculate. I went in the next day and it looked like a bomb had went off in there.
Right.
And that's not the fault of the city, that's not the fault of the city employees, that's the fault of the citizens of this county that treat that place like a dump. And for language that I can't use...
The only thing that I can go back to that is that when something is of quality and not just looking like, here's a trash can, it's, it's there and this is here, but, you know, whatever. Like, okay, could we, if there's a way, like, I'll think more of like a beautification committee, okay? I'm a woman, I see things differently, then just let's, there's your necessities, there you go.
So you think if we just paint it, clean it up, that people would get better care?
Respect it and it looks a little bit more quality and nicer, then people might value it more to where they actually would take care of it better. Rather than, it's just this and it's cinder log wall and, you know, it just kinda looks rough and rough around the edges, and they don't value it, they don't respect it, and they don't, they mistreat it.
I have no problem with painting it and making it look better, but I don't...
April, you didn't say the one thing, I'm not saying, anything you said is spot on. We are, we try what we can, but you know, when things changed, it wasn't, when you were growing up, same with your kids, same as I was, it changed somewhere. If you went in there and made one of those things, what would happen to you? It doesn't happen anymore, it doesn't happen anymore.
No, I get it, I was taught that I, if I leave something or if I go somewhere, I'll leave it nicer than I found it.
And if you did tear something up, you had to fix it or you got a whole lot of trouble from parents.
Right.
Parents now don't do that.
Right.
And that's a big problem.
But we could, like, I know that the one who runs it, she's probably with a discipline. Could we put, if it's a clean slate and it's nice and it's respectable, okay? Put up as many things, you know, as many nice signs that say all these things to make them aware that this is a facility we care about, this is something we care about, y'all, please do this, do not do this, whatever it takes, you know?
We're gonna try anything that works, but we can't keep doing the same thing we've been doing.
Something to add to this a lot, because I work at an elementary school, you would not believe the number of times I have to call the custodian and say...
On the floor and the bathroom.
On the walls.
Oh, I know.
Pull the papers, plug the toilet.
My boys came home from grade school, same thing.
We have a new custodian, we have a new custodian and he's wonderful, and so I called him and I said, please don't quit, you gotta tell me you won't quit before I tell you what's going on.
I know, I've done it before, I've seen those bathrooms in the grade schools, yes.
Those, they're nice facilities and it still happens.
They're not teaching their child, but...
Whether it be little kids doing it out here or big people, somebody, somebody is...
Could we pay anything for using the facilities?
No.
Well, they should, because they don't have any skin in the game. They're the one, it was the parents and the, other than the people that break in at night, but, you know, if it's happening during the games, that, those are the people that are tearing it up and they have no skin in the game, so why, why would they bother?
I just got a text from my mother, my niece Taylor, said there's water flowing in the boys' bathroom in the ballpark, right now, right now.
So that means somebody's tore it up since we've been here tonight.
If they did pay for it, at least the city wouldn't be out all the money for all the...
I had three bills last year, and ten hundred dollars a month for three different bills.
And April, I apologize if I...
Family just wanna clean, clean our...
They do too.
Take my baby and go back to my lady, we didn't...
I apologize if I come off as defensive, but I get really defensive when people start accusing our city employees of anything. Especially when they accuse our city employees of not caring and not taking care of it, because that is absolutely not true. They do clean it, they do take care of it, and they do care about it, and it's trash before they can get out of the parking lot. And I have a real problem when somebody turns around and says, well, the city didn't do this. That's where my defense is, and I apologize for that.
Clean on stuff that I wouldn't have touched with a pole, I mean, it's, that's bad. And they go in there and they, they never say a word, they go and clean it up, they wear their boots and their rubber gloves and stuff and they mop and they clean. Wipe it all off, they do everything they're supposed to do, and when they leave, it's immaculate looking. And within twelve hours, or tw- twenty-four hours, within twenty-four hours, it's trash again. And again, I appreciate you being compassionate about it, but there are five, six people on here, Count James, that are very compassionate about it also. And we have tried, we've tried to come up with every other way. Uh, they wanted to build more bathrooms at the, at the amphitheater this year and I said, gosh, no, let's just put up porta potties, I don't wanna have to deal with any more problems down with the bathrooms.
Are they mistreated?
Not as bad.
Not as bad as the...
Two ways.
But they're not, they're more like...
A lot of times, but listen, a lot of times, the ones that I've, if it's a decent one, they're, they're better than, than these lots of restaurants.
The porta potty company...
I bet it's a nice porta potty, but then that's a cost.
But again, they, they have turned them over, we've had all kinds of problems with them too, so I mean, and again...
The what?
I'm the same one.
The concrete down by the, yeah.
There's gotta be something, I mean, it has to be bad there, so there's gotta be something.
It's, it's gone on poor...
That's why I ask, if you all can ask and see if they will do something like a neighborhood watch, where certain parents, you know, hey, certain times you're gonna be watching the bathroom.
I'm not saying it's Boyd, I don't want to interrupt.
I'm not, I'm not against that, because...
I'm amazed how they can entort themselves to do some of the things they do in the bathroom.
And if we get them stopped, like you said, once they get stopped...
They know that they're real, they know.
And make water run.
And we might, you know, again, you said something, maybe porta potty, be careful, be careful if you tear it up and go, we got a neighborhood, we got a bathroom watch run by the city parents of the, of the league officials.
But you're right, it's totally...
Maybe they'll help, I don't know. But again, we...
I mean, and that's pretty much, that's, space is dedicated to the right.
I'm the same way, I'm passionate about it, I'm a part of it, I appreciate you being so emotional about it.
I just know...
Yeah, and, and I'm right there with you.
We had a baby, it was like, I gotta go...
Yeah, you have to hold them up in the air, go ahead.
What do we do?
And hope you get it.
Don't touch anything in here, I don't wanna...
And hope you get the toilet, hey you.
I don't know, I don't know.
Fresh paint on the walls, making it really sleek and nice, paint on the floor.
Oh, you're wondering if I could try.
I know you don't wanna invest in something that's gotta get brushed and, and, yeah, we're trying to make it sleek and...
We are gonna try and do what we can.
Anything else, we'll go ahead and move along.
Bags and ashes.
Yeah, you can do that.
All through, help it over.
I appreciate it.
Again, I understand.
I love it there.
Do me a favor, well, you gotta...
Yes, fine.
Grandson?
You have any more comments on me, sorry?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had, I had, you can't hear me, can you? I had Mike yesterday for, my mom's birthday.
He called, you don't know him, but I'm sure I'm down there. So we had, I said, I wonder if that's Lou's recipe, but she said, no, it's actually...
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
I'll come down there with you.
Next item. Mike, you're next in line. The other Mike, Mike, Mike Nance, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was, I got three of them sitting back there.
Excuse me while I cough, I'm still trying to recover. Uh, gentlemen and ladies, uh, while I come before the castle tonight, recently I was at the, one of our third regional basketball official final meetings for the season. They were heavy in discussion of travel law. And I hadn't been kept up with it very closely and did not know how much of advantage or disadvantage this may be, but a lot of activity within. In fact, uh, I was chosen and things come up to be part of the group that went down to Muhlenberg County here recently. They had teams that came in from all the states. They had four schools, or, like, they have four gymnasiums. Now, apparently, and I didn't know, the Muhlenberg County North, as I will always refer to it, had four gymnasiums in there with able to play ball. And right beside court, apparently they do. But what I'm asking the president of the castle is that they think about expanding our own facilities. We've got two courts, two in Beaver Dam. Apparently this must be a growing wailacious crowds, because there's a whole lot of teams and a whole lot of people seem to be interested in, hey, food, recreation, uh, places from the state. I know they all can't stay around here in Beaver Dam, but we need, we need to work on that. But what I want to present to the castle is that they think about, how do we form this thing and make it something that, that comes here once a month, once every other month? How do they do it? I don't know how they do it, but I know that there's a whole lot of interest in it and a whole lot going on. And, uh, I don't know where you need to get grants, I mean, but I know we need another facility to house at least two more courts. Because I mean, we could get three courts in here, I was saying, when you, Whalen, middle school, Beaver Dam Elementary.
High school.
However, it would go over, trying to ask the high school to...
They'll do it, because twenty years ago, I had a tournament and I had Beaver Dam, middle school, high school, Whalen. All four were going at the same time, we went all day long, we had thirty-two teams in here. This is in nineteen ninety-eight, year two thousand maybe, and you've been to them, they're unbelievable. Hardest parts, finding enough referees to cover everywhere. But, but the point is, those are not affiliated with the school. So they're, they're, you have to get okayed by the school board. School board is very reluctant now to do that. They'll do it, but they're very reluctant if it's not done by somebody that's involved with the school programs.
Well, how do we, how do we come forth with that, Kevin? I mean, you're telling me things right now that I know Charlie, you're eight.
Yeah, he, he knows, he's... We used to have, I used to do what they called the AAU basketball, amateur athletics team, and I, I've had thirty-two teams in, in Ohio County on the same day, from everywhere, from Louisville to Tennessee to Indiana, everywhere up here. And go, and gyms going all the time, and you play four or five games a day, with a tournament at the end of the day. And it's hard, but I had, I was at the time, I was either at the high school or I was at the middle school one, so I had the okay of the, of the school board. It is almost impossible to do it if you don't have the okay of the school board. So you almost have to have a coach, that either coaches at the high school, like when Charles was there, or, or, or coaches at the middle school or somewhere where they can be, have access to the gyms, that's it.
I wanted, I wanted to pass this along and put it on the table. Something we, it's just, it's another athletic event that we can bring locally to our own economy. Obviously, there's a whole lot of dollars spent during that particular time in Ohio County, if we can get one in. Uh, well, they had one over here since last weekend, and they're ramming. I think right now with the way that the economy's running with fuel prices and everything, that's something we can fix tomorrow. Might be able to get something going, but I mean, it is something that we can look forward and down the road, just a little bit to, with that.
Are you talking about basketball? Because I know there's softball, travel teams, basketball...
He's talking about using the gym.
Baseball, maybe even football.
He has to go forward, because Charles was athletic director out there, I think what I was doing, actually...
You gotta get the, uh, all of you, you need to get the board approval, one, one school that can't, say, they give you their gym, but to get all of them involved and it's gonna take coordination of it, so...
Well, see, that, see, you're telling me that I just, you know, from the official standpoint, here's what I got and here's what I know about it. But I also see the dollars and cents involved along with the, uh, glory and everybody being so happy and we've got something going here, so we got something new. So, hey, you, you've been there, you've been there. I've just been on the other side blowing whistle. I mean, that's all I can say about the other thing, but I know that it's there, it's something that we can...
Who's in charge of this, to make the schedule?
That's what I was gonna ask, who spearheads it?
That's why I say, you almost had to have a coach from the school.
Yeah, I think, who, Charlie, whoever's got the, we've got a tournament that's coming up, maybe they say Henderson, whoever's over the...
So they're independent tournaments?
Yeah.
But if somebody just wanted to have a tournament here one time, they could just get the board approval for one time.
One time only.[1710.42] One time only.
Have a better chance of getting that.
That may be, you're trying, that may be, that may be something that they're actually doing in the way, all right, we're here from this past weekend, two weeks before they were over Mullenburg County, now where they gonna be this next time?
Well, are there any teams in Ohio County playing AAU ball or independent league ball?
Yes, we have a group, I know, uh, that are third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade age, boys and girls.
Oh, yeah.
That are involved in it, uh, but, uh, I'm, you know, like I say, I'm a little rusty a while of going on because it's all just kinda jumped out there and.
It's all been done before, but, and, and they got kinda lost for a while, and I, I, I understand, but it, it's something good, like I said, it's good for the community, but you're talking about a lot of work.
Yes.
A lot of people involved too, cause we had four gyms going for twelve hours a day, you had to have referees for games for every one of them. It gets, it gets expensive, boosters, yeah, and it's, it's tough, it's tough.
It seems like any more kids play multiple sports.
Yep.
And they overlap each other, so I don't know what the answer is. I had a rule, we started out, my, our daughter did multiple, and when she was walking around like a zombie, I said, okay, next year, you're choosing one. But there are kids that play multiple sports.
Maybe they've been, if you've got a nine o'clock game, you do your nine o'clock game, then they do not schedule it again until eleven, but they try to get them both together if they can.
They'll put a game between them, that's what we did when.
Yeah.
And.
Your son played on it, he knows, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's fun.
With that, I, I'm number two, I agree, I, I'm number two.
Okay.
We have what I refer to as a, uh, kids or youth gun club through four H. Jeremy and his wife, along with one other one, presented the four H thing for the last four, five years. Uh, there, and now it has expanded into the high school. The high school themselves has their own shooters group, and I think, the thing I'm saying there is that I'm actually surprised, astonished, odd, because these people not only are teaching these kids how to gun safety, but these kids are going out there and actually learning how to professionally shoot. I want you to wonder, well, I've been to the state competition in three years, and during that three years, it's actually something to go see, that's the Hill and Berea, uh, the Kentucky Fish and Wildlife Facility up there. You've got twenty-five shooting stations down here with five shooters at each station, and these kids are all lined up shooting the plate, it's been thrown out twenty-five different stations at one time, at any one time, all twenty-five of them are going. These are the best of the best in the state, our, our group has been there three times, and I look for them to go back again. Then the last fall, they went over to Owensboro, to the gun club over there, and went in competition with, uh, the Kraken County, Murray, uh, Hancock County, Ohio County, I think it was like nine different schools participated and came out number one. And I, I seen some kids shoot that I couldn't think about him, how well they were doing, cause I never was that good. Now, I know we've got a problem with the range that's part of it. Somebody don't like somebody, let, with the kids shooting out there. Somebody says I own it, somebody else says I own it, somebody else is saying, I'm not gonna let them do it, but I'm not gonna do this. What I'm asking for the commission to take into, uh, a possibility with is, I heard at the old sewage plant, you've got a gift right there that you can line up down through there, and have a facility set up properly, and it's not gonna take that much money. You know, you're talking about some pads, parking area, whatnot, uh, our police department shoot down there too, they gotta qualify every so often, and they have, and I understand, we have local instructors and firearms people that are qualified to certify these people, and same way with the, with this trap range. Some equipment's already there, we already have it, and I say we, I get to drug into this thing with the kids every so often, when I want to or not.
The grandparent part?
Yeah, I didn't. One short, but, uh, anyway, but, uh, I would ask the city council and the commission to take this under advisement at least, and see what you can do about changing this area over, down to where it can be used with these kids at the recreational area for shooting and using their trap shoots, with that.
Is that anything besides shotguns, I tell you shoot?
No, shotgun's on.
Okay.
Uh, that's all of their, I wouldn't even think about the.
But I've wondered.
High, high powered firearms, yes.
Well, we have looked and talked, and there is a rough plan, or an idea for a design work down at the old wastewater plant, and shooting was actually one of the things, we had some meetings, it's been a couple of years ago, it all comes back to funding, and a little bit at a time, we're starting to look at the twenty-five year plan. That, yeah, it was a twenty-five year plan, I know. Uh, look that direction, because we don't have the funds that a lot of the bigger communities do. But that was on there, and the, the shooting was on there. There's a little, little hole around on the backside, wasn't there, that they talked about shooting off of? And archery also, everything was down there, yeah.
Now, out of number three, and I'll be brief with it, is going to be a parking issue on East Eighth by the liquor store. If anybody hasn't driven up from my end down there, and finds somebody staring you in the face because they dart out around somebody else's parked vehicle, which is sticking out in the street, hey, you ain't lived. It happens daily, multiple times daily, somebody's gonna get clobbered, and it's just a matter of time.
And you're talking about a person, not a car?
Yes, person and cars.
Yeah.
You'll try driving up through there sometime, I have actually been in the middle of the street trying to get around a vehicle that's parked over here on this side, and, uh, somebody blasted out, or somebody turning off Main Street, and send them zipping down through there, and you're looking around, somebody did it. Now, Larry, is that, is that a thirty foot wide street?
I'm up here, what do you think, you're hit? I'm up here.
I mean, normally, the street's a thirty foot wide. If you had, the vehicles that are parking there at the liquor store are pulling in at an angle.
Okay.
At any given time, you're gonna have six, eight foot of that vehicle probably sticking out in the travel portion of East Eight. Sometimes more, depends on how big the vehicle is. I do not, under any circumstances, if that man or any of his people, they have to run down through there, just check the park. It's not something that needs to be done, if they find it, they find you, they're busy, you got other things to do besides being metered. But I do feel like that the council can put some pressure on it, in this group, to change the parking alongside East Eighth Street to parallel parking, I'm not telling them to re, to remove it, just change the, the outlet so that we that live or travel that street regularly, does not have to wonder when that next car is gonna turn in off of the Main Street or dart around the building, and we're looking straight in the face.
Okay, now you're talking about, okay, the, the angle parking on Eighth Street, can we look at that and see what's?
Yeah, we'll check, I'm, that, that's the time we can look at.
I'm just, I don't mean to tell you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Cause I haven't noticed.
I haven't.
And, and I don't understand people that park with the rear end hanging out in the road, I, sometimes I get in my car and pull it up three or four times, keep from hanging out somewhere.
Play with that comment.
Yeah, I know, you're doing that too.
Well, when I, whenever I can, no. I can't say what I wanna say, Mike, cause you know we're being filmed.
Mike, Erwin, do you have anything else you wanna?
No, I just, just appreciated, your time and concern, and everybody, and just, a lot of people asking, so I said, well, I'm, I didn't wanna show it like I did Carrie.
Oh, yeah.
But we're very Christian.
Well, I, I called you, but you didn't answer a while ago, but, yeah.
Did you?
Yeah, I did.
I text you, you didn't answer, I was mad too.
Okay, Lonnie, I save the best for last. You got anything?
I'm the cornstalk man.
Yeah?
They thought every one of them cornstalks come off me.
I know.
I said, it's ninety more acres of corn dirt size mine, I got fourteen, or I, I don't have a, I didn't have a stalk.
Yeah.
Fourteen acres, and, and all ring.
Honestly, Lonnie, I'm glad you didn't say anything, cause I think it would've just made it worse. Because I knew it wasn't you, but I wasn't wanting them to get all involved.
If, if they would, uh, clean the landfills up over there, and, and the junkyard, the water could get on out with her too.
Good point.
And, and she talking about her cornstalk, uh, being in her driveway, the shrub stopped them, she didn't have the shrub buried, it went on out.
That might be true too.
But I didn't say a word.
And I appreciate that.
No, I, I, you can't help an eight inch rank.
No, I know.
I told, I told, uh, Shirley, I said, uh, Ohio River is out at the back, it works with cornstalk hill, western landing, you know? And Green River, my dad's house built it down the river in thirty-seven.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, the, the hotel down at the, down at, what was it, the little, what is the name of that place down there on the river? Toward Rockford, Chigger, Chiggerville.
Surabone.
Chiggerville, Chiggerville Hotel's gone.
Well, yeah.
They, they just sucked it right off face third, so, yeah.
You, you.
We had fluid.
You can't stop the good Lord from seeing this stuff.
Well, that first range she's talking about, and I, I remember the date, because we were supposed to be having a wedding shower in here, and water was coming in the front door, June twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety.
That was a bad.
I've been there since eighty-two, and it's the first time, that, a, an eight inch rank.
Yeah.
As the first time water ever got in my shop, we were getting here about, oh, a half inch or so.
Yes, but water's been over the road over where she's at several times, since I've been, yeah, I mean.
And it's been doing that for years.
Yeah, since I was there in the eighties, I was in there in the eighties, I moved out, I think I moved in my house in eighty-one, and I, I was there all through the eighties.
They did it in the fifties or something.
Yeah, I know, my grandmother lived in five sixteen.
Yep.
That's all I'm shouting.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you coming, we hadn't seen you in forever.
I don't need to be.